All right, I'd like to call the public hearing for the 2018-19 budget to order. And at this point, I will turn it over to Dr. Michelle Langfield for introductory remarks.
I think this is, um, thank you, Brenda. As we think about tonight, this is the last meeting that we have scheduled for the budget. I know that John and Kasia, who will be presenting tonight, has some minor changes, but overall, the mil rate is staying the same. We had the first introduction where the, where it was posted so that the community could see it on October 12th. Then October 15th, we had John presented at our board meeting. And then on October 17th, we had public participation. And I know John has had some reach out from folks and has been very responsive to any questions that people might have had about the budget. And so here we are tonight. So, and I know he's got some changes that he wanted to just walk through. Some new data came in, so I'm going to turn it over to John.
Thank you. Well, good evening. And I think the communication I've had with this board is, has been probably greater than all the time that I've had from previous boards that I've worked with and for. So, many of you asked questions to want to make sure you can get clarified answers. And if I needed to reach out to those individuals responsible, I was able to do that and provide you with feedback to questions that you had. So this evening, the changes that you see behind, behind you is, again, typical for any budget year. Many of the numbers that come out happen to fall on the first night that we had our budget announcement on October 15th. So I knew at that particular point, but all the materials are due the week before, so we want to make sure we provide you with the most up-to-date information. And all the changes that are here relate, and towards the end, you see that there is absolutely no change in the final taxation or mil rate at 10.01. So all of the changes from the general debt service and community service, you see are listed for you towards the middle of the page. So again, it affects Fund 10 and it affects Fund 30, which is our debt. And I did reference, I think, every item. If you want to see it, the expenditure changes. The payment for state vouchers was not released until the 15th. And you see the dollar figure there. And in order to accommodate that change, because that's an unknown, and again, make sure you understand, that the number or the cap was lifted from 2% to 3%, and the dollar amount was increased as well. So you see the final numbers or the details there. And underneath it, as I mentioned, at the 15th and the 17th, changes would be made for the following areas: non-capital equipment, which is updates to our classrooms, including some textbook purchases for teaching and learning, the three additional staffing or nurses that were approved. And then the change would occur in the refunding that we would do in Fund 30. So if you're wondering, why do we have an expense that's higher in vouchers? Why we wouldn't have that same expense show on a change? The change net, in order for it to occur to be neutral, requires us to look at Fund 30 and refund a lower amount. So instead, we're going to refund a slightly lower amount and end up with a savings, instead of $10 million, to about $6 million, based upon the estimates we've received from Baird. So we had an original dollar amount that we looked to refund, and we'll talk more in the spring, and you'll see the debt schedule. I actually have it, an estimate here, but that's, that's why you see a switch with both Fund 10 and Fund 30. So when it says refunding principle, we originally were at 2.469, now we're at 1.900. But what it does to our tax rate is it doesn't change anything that was posted as our notice in the paper, that we discussed in the 15th, and we also discussed on the 17th. Now, the next attachment that you'll see, and Lori, if you could post, is the final version of the budget book. And what I did for you was place and read the changes that occurred in the budget book from what you were given as a printed budget. So we didn't print new documents. What you see, if you turn to first Fund 10 revenue, are the changes reflected from what I just described to you. And if you keep going a little further, you'll see it. Is this off the jump drive or the website?
Um, off the jump drive.
Okay, you can go off the, go off of Neptune, please. Right, that's the same one you're looking at right now. Yep.
If she does that, John, just to clarify, I know that we're getting students back since the third Friday count. We don't necessarily know if they had vouchers or not. How will that change as those students come back? If they were voucher students?
The next count date that's significant for us is the second Friday in January. So there'll be a refreshed count. And when we get that count, that count is used for equalized aid. So equalized aid, remember, is the single largest distribution of state aid from the state. And it's important that that second January count be accurate, and it will reflect numbers that potentially we did not have in the fall. Of course, it could be the other way as well. It, it could, again, be projected down, but I certainly think enrollment trends are something I've, I actually have a meeting scheduled tomorrow to make sure, when we look at ESA reporting and any type of reporting in the future, that our enrollment counts are accurate and that we have our costing accurate that reflects where we're spending money.
So I think I understand this correctly, but just to, just to make sure, as far as the vouchers and the second round of counting, if we have a student who started the year at a voucher school and has come back already, the voucher school keeps all of the money then until that student would be reflected in our second count in January, and then we would get the money. Is that, is that correct? I mean, we, we are out the money, we would not get any money back even if they were here from the fourth Monday in September till now. Is that correct?
Let me, let me just state it a little differently for you. For the third Friday count, a voucher student, we actually levy for that student, and that's part of the 4.7 million. So it's on top of what our regular levy is. And we don't receive any equalized aid for the student
Right.
...in the September 3rd Friday count. The second Friday count in January is used, and let's say for your example, that that student is back, is used in calculating next year's equalized aid.
I see.
Okay?
So they keep them?
But they keep them. I mean, no money comes back to us if someone comes back one day after a third Friday count.
But what I wanted to make sure you understood, and I'll, I'll say it this way, is we levy for it and we expense it. So it's a wash on the expense and the revenue side.
Okay, but the taxpayers are paying for it.
For, for any of the voucher students.
And whether that's, whether they stay for the year or, or not, then we're, they're essentially paying.
We levy for it and we expense it.
Okay.
And it's 100% as opposed to, for our own, our students that are in our district, we get two-thirds, or 60% of that money is state aid, 30% is, or 40% is property tax, more or less. Whereas the voucher student, you're saying we get no state aid, so when we levy for that, it's the 100% of the cost.
Correct.
And they get to keep the money for a student that they're no longer providing services for?
Yeah, and what I'll do to verify, because we levy for that student, that we expense it completely out. And I have never had a situation where somebody has frankly asked that question, but since we levy for the full amount, it's certainly an understanding that we would expense it completely out, because otherwise, we would be levying for a student where we, we may end up including them in an account, and that certainly is not possible.
Brenda?
So then can you explain when students open enroll out of the district and we retain some funding, how that works with a levy?
Sure. For open enrolled students in September, they're included in our count, so we can use those to multiply by our low rev, or our revenue limit per month, which is about, well, it's $9,450. And for open enrolled students this year, we'll end up paying for that student to attend another school district, $7,379. So you could argue that the difference between the two is, or is the dollar amount that school districts across the state are provided, because when a student does leave, it's not as though you could flat reduce your expenses by that equal dollar amount yet at this point. Maybe someday it will be higher or lower, depending on who's, who's, who's in the state legislature. But right now, in order to accommodate students coming and going, you end up overlevying for the amount that you lose on an out. Now, an in, the reverse is true. We're not levying for that student, but we're receiving that 7379 from another school district. So there is somewhat of a balance there. It's not an equal amount that you levy for.
Thanks.
Now, to be honest, there are only a few changes here from the other day. I hope for each of you, none of this is a surprise. I certainly didn't want it to be a surprise, and it wasn't. I tried to touch on every single change that we had two weeks ago on Monday and Wednesday. And this is, again, typical of all school districts, that you do have adjustments. This is true last year, and for veteran members, I'm sure they're aware.
Any questions for John? So you've covered the, all the recommended changes?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right. At this point, would be a time for a public comment. I don't have anybody that's filled out a form to speak. Is there anyone who would like to speak regarding the budget this evening? All right, seeing none, then I would entertain a motion for adjournment of the public hearing.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, then we'll begin our special board meeting, and I would entertain the first motion. Does anybody have it?
I move that the 2018-19 approved budget, as modified, be adopted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Brenda?
Just because I haven't been part of this, so I have some questions in general. I'm just looking for some specifics. So at what point would I do that?
We're about to adopt the budget, so we probably should ask them now.
Okay. And I'm not entirely sure who I need to ask the questions to.
Ask the questions and whoever has an answer?
Yes, I guess. Okay, so, thank you. So my first question is, under Fund 10, the general fund, under
Do you have a page number?
Yep, page nine. Under truant officer salaries, it's
Do you have an item number?
It is 200124. I'm just wondering, significant increase from 2016. I just want to know why? And what are these, what are these people actually doing and where are they at? And why the increase?
Hi. The police department didn't have anyone available to fill that position for about two or three years prior to us filling it last January. Their role, I don't want the social workers doing home visits alone, so they contact the truancy officer of the student that hasn't been attending, and he goes with them.
Is that one?
Yes, ma'am.
That's one position?
Correct. He puts in typically about five hours a week.
How many?
Five.
So they only accompany a social worker? Or would they
They might go with an administrator on occasion.
Okay, they wouldn't go solo?
No, I wouldn't say that that would be out of line for them to do. They could go solo. Most often, though, it would be to accompany.
Those are, they're a police officer on an extra assignment?
Yes, sir, yes.
Okay. Working for us during that time, or we're paying the police department? It's a side job working for the district? Okay. I guess, I guess, I guess a discussion about, you know, I think there might be a different message sending a police officer alone versus two people going for safety with a social worker, but that's a, that's a policy discussion, not a, not a budget issue, so. Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, you might want to
Okay. Just get comfortable.
Yep, well, not necessarily. Page 10, so flip it over. Item 200310 in Fund 10, under expenditures, the contracted services, you know, went from 2016, $4,541,996, to $7,866,520, so $3 million increase. What falls in contracted services? Because I don't, you know, I would love to have actually seen that possibly, you know, spelled out. I had people asking me, I'm not sure what that is. And so I'm just wondering if you could talk about what that is?
Sure.
Or who those people are?
Well, it's contracted services, meaning we're paying a vendor for a service. And what I'd like you to do, and I can provide a detail at any time of all of our contracted services or any particular item, but if you look at the 300s, and the 300s are the object we're talking about, on top of page 11, you're looking at a total dollar amount of $48,375,110, right? And then I want you to look at the 400s right underneath it, at 11-1. Okay? Between the 3 and the 4s, there are a lot of object and accounting changes that DPI institutes from year to year. And there is fluctuation between someone purchasing something and someone buying a capital or non-capital, or excuse me, a non-capital item in the 400s. There is an interplay between the two because of how we account for things, but we can specifically, of course, break down any list. Now, if you go down or turn the page 12 and look at the top line for, in 800, here is a group where this year we're at $33 million, in the previous year, we're at $41. And where that occurred, if you go back to page 11, and I'm not trying to move you around, but I want to show you that the question has been asked about an $11.4 million non-referendum debt fund, and this year, we're at zero. That is part of our energy exemption note, that we had debt payments, and we prepaid some debt so we could maneuver funds in other areas to address needs, and therefore didn't have that. So between the 3s, the 4s, and the 8s, they're, they're certainly looking at it holistically. It isn't an increase, but of course, any breakdown for any of these numbers could be provided at any time. So I, I want context, and I want all board members to have an understanding of, of what at play there, because purchase services in the 300s, any additions or subtractions, depending on the budget that you're talking about, would, will have an influence on potential 4s. There's a lot less 5s because capital thresholds are so much higher now, so you don't see as much expenditures there. But then you do draw from what you see here at $11 million. I mean, that's a substantial amount of, of money, to where you can redeploy those in ones and twos. Because if you look at our, our overall revenue, our overall revenue out of $274.7 million only went up $700,000. There is what I tried to talk about in January of last year. Our expenditures and revenues, and tracking, that's very important for board members, to see that with inflation projected now, right now, if I projected inflation, and I mentioned it to a board member already, that we're around 2.5%. So simply from an expenditure standpoint, if revenues continue to track at the current pace, and CPI is above 2, and let's say it's as high as 275, that anything that we can do to help offset expenses in order to fund the programming that the board wants is, is what we need to identify too, because expenditures went up only 1.6% total, total. So revenues, .7 over 274, so it's a very small increase, and a very small increase on the other side. So I veered off subject, but I, again, I want to make sure I can explain it where you are given the answers you need, and at the same time, can, in the full context of how these are put together.
Okay, um, thank you. But can you give me an example of what contracted services are?
Sure. A roof repair.
Okay.
A contracted service is the air contract from Washington. That's a 310. Anything that a company comes in and provides a service for us is a 310 object.
Is there any, is there any possible way that you have a list of that you could provide to me right now? Do you have that somewhere?
I'm, I'm not exactly sure
I mean, there's a number, they're right, there's a number, so there must be something that adds up to that number, so there, I would imagine there to be a group of contracted services?
Well, of course, there is. But it's generated through our financial software and produced into a report. I can provide the financial software and go through all of the 310 objects in, in that software. I don't have a report this, the second with it, but I certainly, of course, that's how it's generated.
So aside from the roof repair and the AIR contract, by memory, can you just name a few other contracted services? Maybe not necessarily their, their amount, but maybe just their actual name?
Can I ask a follow-up to that?
Sure.
I think for me too, would be, because there's multiple line items where contracted services comes up, so it would be interesting to know what, I don't know, not necessarily. We don't have to get into the weeds, but yeah, I think with this one, because the number is so big.
There must be a couple of new big tickets in there if we're going up by 2.7 million.
Well, again, I'll go ahead.
And I think Mike Stengel could probably address some of those as well.
You can go on, Mike.
Yeah, in terms of just what are projects that are underway that we've
Technology, you name food service, the whole thing.
Some of our students, for either disciplinary reasons or for safety reasons, we contract with outside resources to provide their educational service. That's a substantial amount.
Another substantial amount is when we hire contractors for our constructions. So like, for instance, over at Baird, we've hired several contractors, like Mygrin and Perkman, and so then when we contract that out, we list as 310 as contracted services.
So these are from referendum, some of it is from referendum projects?
Not, not in Fund 10.
No, see, we have, but we have our 3.5 million where we do on an annual basis, and a lot of that goes into 310.
Yeah, we had that last year too.
Correct.
So that doesn't, that, that part doesn't, wants to explain the difference here? Right, the, the amount that we spent for capital improvements, which we've spent three and a half million a year, that would be a wash, so there's still something else, there's still some other things that are causing us to go up 2.7. I'm not, I'm not saying it's not valid or something, I'm just wondering for some highlights on what is so big ticket here.
Well, and again, I don't have, I don't have enough details in front of me right now to tell you, but at the same time, I want you to look at the rest of the 3s and the rest of the 4s to look at balance. Because if I look at 4, 436 is an example, you're at 4.2 million and now you're down to 6,000. There is an interplay in both objects that balance themselves, and it depends on the services people want. So when people submit, or departments submit budgets, the, the cap is important, but the sum could come from either object. So again, on page 11, if you look at 436, that's just one, one example. I could certainly provide a breakdown of every single object or the budget itself, and again, the spreadsheet that I mentioned on the 15th, with the 60,000 lines of code that provide each individual budget, which we're happy to walk through with you.
So it was, it was something that was brought to my attention from the public, because it was such a significant increase. And so I think, you know, that would be something, it would be nice if, if the public had accessed that as well.
Sure.
And I, and I get the, I just, I get what you're saying about balancing it, but to me personally, I'm speaking for myself, it's important, not just that it's balanced, how it's spent as well, and that matters to me a lot.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So the best way to get itemized lists is to set up time to, to meet with you, to, to go through it on the, online?
Absolutely. If you, however, whatever it is.
So anybody's, you know, at any point can
I want to show you our financial system too. I think it will help any board member at any time that you're comfortable understanding what you're looking at, but again, in the bigger picture too. And I'm doing my best to try and provide that for you.
And some other thing though, okay, there must be, there must be something that would just stand out immediately in contracted services, or is this 2 million, this 2.7 million really just coming in small pieces? I mean, there isn't a new million-dollar contract, million and a half dollar contract? I'm not, if the answer is that it's, you know, 27, $60,000 contracts, I'm not asking for a breakdown on that. If there's, there must be a couple of big tickets in there that we would
Yeah.
It's actually 3 million more.
John, John, wouldn't, wouldn't anything over a certain amount be approved by the board for a contract?
Absolutely, and I'm, I'm, we'll attempt to look through some of my notes that people asked me about.
Yeah, I'm looking at it because, John Yeah, I'm looking at it because, John, it was something I asked you about. I can see it in my notes, it circled in question mark as well. And I know I've talked to you about it, and I'm trying to find my notes to see what I had written down, because you talked to me about it, that circled it as well.
Go ahead, Diane.
Technology, like facilities, was mentioned as being a department who uses a lot of contracted services. And for this upcoming year, it is our wide area network that we are building. Because we do receive rates back on it, eighty percent, but we are completing our wide area network. We're connecting all our schools with fiber, so we no longer have to lease that from a company. And so I do believe that that may be a large part of it, John, regarding contracted services.
And that might be over a million?
Oh, yes.
Is there any way we can, I mean, we don't really know, right? I mean, we're just kind of guessing, is there any way we could?
We're not guessing.
We can't, well, if we're not guessing, then we have it in front of us, right? Is there any way we could find out what that is?
Yeah, just the easiest thing is to go to his office and have him show you.
I agree with that, but I like, I like to do my board business in public, so I'm just wondering if there's any?
This is, you know, rough idea, is it, it's well over a million? Is it possibly even over two, the wide area network? Okay, so, and that was, that was zero last year, because this is the year we do it?
Correct.
And it's all a contracted service?
That's all under contracted services.
Okay, even though some of it might be, even though some of it might be physical, are we buying physical things, but that's still in the contracted service number?
Yes, our payments are classified as contracted services.
Okay, even for hard goods, routers and switches and things? Okay.
So hopefully that's helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Go ahead, Christina.
Maybe this is for Jean. I'm looking at the teacher overloads on page nine, which is the two hundred series one fifty-seven. And I know when I spoke to John earlier and Jean, I was told that this was most likely high school teachers who are taking on an extra class. And I'm just wondering, Jean, I mean, this is a big jump from twenty sixteen. And if you foresee this being kind of a trend, with teachers needing to pick up extra loads and coursework, and how you see this sort of playing out in the long term with teacher turnover, stress, burnout, and so forth?
Well, I think that we could certainly see this being a trend because of the shortage of teachers. And, you know, we try to be reasonable about the overloads. Some teachers are open to taking an overload, but we follow the same process that we've used when we had a teacher contract, it hasn't changed. And so the compensation that we provide teachers has been negotiated years ago when we had a contract. And so we work with the principals and the executive directors to determine if an overload is feasible, and then do best to do it, mostly based on their availability as well as their qualifications. But I do see that we continue this, I don't think it's going to necessarily go down.
Do you see there being a model where perhaps we might be able to hire people on full time, where they would split time between schools? And it just seems like a very inefficient, I mean, people want to teach more, and to make extra money. It's great to give them that option, but?
It depends upon where the overloads are occurring. Usually, we don't, the first idea is not to give an overload, the first, you know, it's to hire somebody. But if you have a class, you know, in different places, you can't, we do travel teachers, but that's also not efficient, and teachers prefer not to be in traveling assignments for the most part. So it, with the number of schools that we have, having overloads, while it seems like a lot, is sometimes a way to handle when you have a class here and there. And if you have special requirements, so if it's an overload in something where you might not even be able to find a part-time teacher. Part-time teachers is always something we look for, too. But if you have a specialty area, like a part-time family consumer science, you may not find that type of individual.
That's helpful, thank you.
How often, roughly speaking, are most, are most overloads able to be through a volunteer process? Fifty-fifty, or most not desired?
Yes, we don't force an overload. If a person says, "I absolutely can't do it," we will look for anything else, it's, it's?
Okay, so a forced overload would be extraordinarily rare? Or are you saying there's zero, or very rare?
It depends on what you mean by forced. I think if we, if somebody says, "I absolutely can't take this overload," we wouldn't force that. You know, it's not like mandatory overtime or anything like that. Because the thing is, there's no point to forcing somebody to do something they're absolutely not able to do because they wouldn't be able to be successful in it. I guess I'd have to check with the executive directors to see what happens in the school, because typically, it's the principals with their executive directors that look at the overloads. We know what they are, and we put them in the system to compensate them.
Okay, if it's, if it's mostly, if it can, almost all of it can be accommodated through volunteers, that's?
It, it all can. There are no forced overloads. I mean, somebody might be asked with great enthusiasm, Jean, could you please do this? I'd really appreciate it, it would help us. But there is no forcing of overload. It has to be something that somebody agrees to. Occasionally, they also come up if there's, of course, fluctuation in course enrollment, or things of that nature, where we want to reduce a class size, for instance, because we ended up getting more people in, and we need to open another section for balance.
A teacher could very well prefer two sections of seventeen getting paid more than trying to cram in.
Right.
And not accommodate.
And of course, I agree, we want to keep things balanced, because we don't want people overworking to the, you know, so that their, teaching can already be challenging enough, that we don't want people to feel that they have to take the overloads. Sometimes as well, teachers feel that for their particular subject area at higher levels, that they have a subject area specificity, as far as their knowledge in instruction, and they want to make sure, just for sake of purity, that that class is taught by them because they have particular expertise. They wouldn't want it taught dummy down by somebody who might have less credential to do so. So that's another reason why sometimes people take on overload. Again, as Jean said, we do seek to reduce that as much as possible. But nationwide, there are, there are huge increases in the number of, or in the number of unfilled positions throughout districts and in substitute teaching, and then subsequently in clerical staff.
And that was something that was reiterated. I meet regularly with HR directors from the region who are in school districts, and we talked about the staffing shortage that they're all feeling. I mean, it's the topic of conversation. And, you know, we talked about ways you deal with it, and one of them said, "overloads." We couldn't hire a part-time teacher to teach this, so we split the work up, among others. So while we'll try to maintain as little overloads as possible, I don't think I could honestly say that it's going to go away. And I, and I think we have to realize that this is, this will not be business as usual as we face even a greater teacher shortage. And there's just fewer people going into education, and we have almost full employment right now.
So the overload was zero in two thousand and sixteen, is that an accounting change? That we, that we stuck overloads in a different place in two thousand and sixteen?
My guess would be yes, because we've always, I've never been in a system that hasn't had overloads. Again, we sometimes are in tighter spots because of the demand and certain specific credentialing that people have. But it's something that we've worked diligently to try to avoid as well through some of the work that we're doing through Thriving Workforce in partnership with the GBEA, as well as through the center's work with Carnegie.
There are a couple lines in there that talk about additional teacher time that shifted from previous budgets, because John and I had the same conversation, and I said, "How could that be?" Because it didn't make sense, because we've always had overloads. And I found a couple of different line items that had additional teacher time in them, kind of disparate and different parts. So you could see that there was something there last year, it just isn't in the same line. And I think that's really the caution always with this budget. You know, I combed through it a lot, and John and I had a lot of conversations, because there are things that get shifted, and some of the things actually get coded totally different. And there's big, big shifts in certain items. And if you don't know, I went over to HR and sat in there myself one night and said, "Okay, tell me what happened here." And so, I mean, I think that that's the piece, the best way is to make sure that you ask those questions so that you can get the detail behind, because the book is about, what did you say? How many line items, thirty-three thousand?
Sixty thousand.
Sixty thousand line items, so it isn't always as clear, but it's all there.
And this isn't a budget question, but rather just one other quick piece. Is the, when, when people are being asked to take on another class to do more teaching, I'm assuming then that we are reducing other potential responsibilities, shifting other things maybe off their plate to alleviate some of the potential burnout from that?
They work with the principals, you know, some of the assignable time might be shifted to a different time. So an overload might be one semester, but not the other semester, so the principal shifts some of the other duties.
Thank you.
Rhonda?
The community school fund?
What number, Rhonda?
Well, I don't, yeah.
So Fund Eighty?
Yeah, I don't see, actually see the words, so I'm just wondering about that.
On Fund Eighty?
Right.
On Fund Eighty?
Yeah.
Now, you're asking specifically about community schools?
Right.
And you're thinking that there should be money?
I'm just wondering in Fund Eighty, how it's, mention where it is inside of that.
Sure. A very similar question to another one earlier about community schools and the community fund. So for Fund Eighty, we propose to tax for community service. DPI establishes what the criteria is on what you can tax for and expense in community service. Community service occurs before school or after school with individuals who could be in our schools, but are also in the community. So we cannot tax for a community school during regular school hours. Those are located in Fund Ten. So there is a portion that's also located in Fund Eighty. Kim Shanok runs those, that program, and there has been an increased, certainly, effort in that regard. And the expenditures that you see for that, if it occurs after three PM and involves the community, we're allowed to tax for it and place it in that fund. The purchase service that you see there is really our SRO officers. Now, those qualify according to DPI standards, in addition to what we do with community services. So it's kind of a mishmash of things in community service, but it's not necessarily community schools. Because you have to fit certain criteria that I tried to describe briefly. The rest of them, if we're talking about services that we're providing to our students during the course of the day, fall under Fund Ten in that particular location. Because all of our locations are designated with a number just as Fund Eighty, but Fund Eighty is taxed at a different rate and expense. Yes?
So what you're saying, what the community schools is that, for that model, they're pulling funding from general fund, and for some of the other pieces that tap into the before and after, that would, those additional pieces would come from the Fund Eighty budget?
That's correct.
Okay. One other additional follow-up question for you, for the contracted services. You said, I know that that includes the eleven SROs. Is that, is that the total for the SROs? Or are there other contracted services included, do you know off the top of your?
There are other.
Okay.
There are others.
And one other question. With the community schools model being a commitment that we've shared and been pretty clear about, I think with our community, do we anticipate that this fund, maybe this is more of a projection, John, but do you anticipate seeing this fund needing to grow as we expand that model, and we really think about the services and the wraparound services that our kids and our families need after school?
If you turn the page, I think I'll answer it this way. On the backside is our levy comparison, and I want you to focus in on Fund Eighty for a moment. This is a fund that there is a lot of eyes on it, because typically, we're three- and four-year-olds up to twelfth grade, and we, the Board of Education, levies in Fund Ten to educate our students. Fund Eighty extends that to the community a little further. So there's tight restrictions on what we can and cannot expense out of here. And the levy that you see here, so again, it began in two thousand and seven, has been fairly consistent, because the programming has been consistent. But certainly, the board has the opportunity to look at this as a potential levy source for expenses if, if the board decides as a whole that it fits the needs of the direction you would want to head. So it is, it is a very different mechanism that the state legislature has allowed boards to utilize, and something to consider in the future. And as I mentioned to a board member already, SROs are a discussion that some people have, and those clearly can be coded here as well. And I also stated that our fund balance, so our fund balance is about one point four million. I've, I've actually proposed a budget this year that's slightly overspends, which is something I would not be recommending in the general fund. That's a bond rating issue that we would have. But in Fund Eighty, I think we have the opportunity to bring that fund balance down with some expenditures that, as long as they could qualify, we could actually overspend and not have to levy for any further amount. It's not sustainable for the indefinite future, but shorter term, I think it's a strategy you might want to consider.
I'd also mentioned to John earlier, so I just want to point this out as well, that a lot of urban school districts are also using this type of, this funding structure to pay for the whole child model. So thinking about, you know, the whole school, whole community child model, and that has been a best practice for a lot. So I think there is a lot of opportunity here to really grow and really make some deeper connections that we can't pull in from other funding sources. I just think it's exciting.
Yeah, we had, we dropped it. We had a lot of conversations with people from the Taxpayers Alliance, because they're very uncomfortable with Fund Eighty, because it's sort of this carte blanche, we can do whatever we want, because it's not revenue limited. And so we've been, we have tried to be extremely responsible with how we spend out of Fund Eighty, because in recognition of the taxpayers. So anyway, just, I mean, it is, you know, certainly something we can look at, but it's not something that I think would be, you know, I don't, personally, I don't see us just, you know, adding another three million, four million dollars to it.
You can do both, yeah.
So it's, it's just something to keep in mind as we, as we move forward. And we've taken out quite a few things out of there, and shifted it back into our Fund Ten because, because of the concerns from taxpayers. And then also, I don't know, how many years ago, DPI actually was asked by the legislature to define more clearly what's allowable in Fund Eighty and what's not. So that was part of a couple of things we took out, but then we took a few more things out on our own. That's kind of the history of where we've been with Fund Eighty.
Yeah, thank you.
Just as a follow-up, though, I think it has been an ongoing conversation with my colleagues around addressing the use of the whole child, recognizing that we see children fourteen to fifteen percent or less during the school day. And so what, what some of, in Fund Eighty and our current budget really reflects is our after-school programming and some of the pieces in partnership with our community partners. But I know that even in conversations with our community, there's been some discussion that people aren't even aware that this exists as a possibility for community schools programming. You know, right now, in our community schools program, we don't have any large investments, because we're following the house school. But as we move forward, even looking at? But as we move forward, even looking at volunteer coordinators, someone that really works outside into the community, I mean, it really just has to fit that criteria. And it's a rigorous criteria. And so we took out some positions that were kind of not necessarily clear. But again, to really have that outward-facing community piece is really what, what the intention, from what I understand, was for these dollars. So again, it's trying to balance all the needs within that framework. And, and for a while there, I think there was, there was, there still is real concern around, around school resource officers in that, in that framework across the state. That isn't just Green Bay, but we hear it. But when the state hasn't provided the funding and people need that safety piece, it's, it's been where most districts have gone.
Well, and all of that being said, we can still be good stewards of the taxpayers' money and look for opportunities.
Absolutely.
Right.
It's not an either-or-sum.
No, no, it's not.
Absolutely.
So are you saying they're actually spending that money, other, you said other districts are using that money for SROs?
Like we are.
Like we are.
Right?
Yeah, yeah.
A lot of districts.
Yeah, a lot of districts have used that funding.
I think that's the most common. And the second would be facilities. So if you have a pool, as an example.
A community.
Yeah, that the community uses or fitness centers or, I mean, those are fairly common Fund 80 expenditures along with SROs, the larger ones. So if you, you know, have a large indoor facility as an example, I mean, it's very expensive to maintain and run, this is an opportunity to fund it in that fashion. Because it is very tight on restrictions.
I'm not overly familiar with the restrictions. Are social workers and programs for children, are those possibilities? Or are those restricted?
I'll answer that. I, I guess it's no different than what I said earlier. If we could provide a job description where somebody worked outside of the school day, either before or after school, and they worked with community members, which include, could include students, it's a possibility. We would put it through some criteria to review with an auditor to make sure, but I think it, it could be done. I'm not saying it, it would be, but it could be.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I, I just want to ask, and I know that you don't have the list, but in regards to the AIR contracted services in general fund, from memory, do you know if that's still $394,000 that's allocated or is it more in the budget?
Well, here's what I know. And the contract was for $394,000 and we made a payment last fiscal year of $61,000. So the difference is where we're at today. We have not been invoiced. I wanted to establish an invoice rather than paying upfront in July. The original contract had us putting almost the entire amount. And we prorated it now on a monthly basis so we could do it on an as-is. Now, in terms of staff, what I understand is for professional development this past summer, we expensed approximately $13,000 so, to pay individuals outside of their work schedule to attend. Those are the expenses that have occurred thus far. I have not been invoiced from air since. If Mr. Magus has anything he wants to add, if that's accurate, that's...
That's accurate. And I think the other piece to recognize as we move forward is it is a month-to-month circumstance that we signed off on that would afford us as we move forward the opportunity to make sure that our return on investment is where we need and expect it to be.
Go ahead, Rhonda.
So out of the 394, they've only invoiced for 13,000?
No. $61,000 was last fiscal year. The 13 was for professional development for the summer. The balance, they have not invoiced. Originally, they wanted to invoice, I would suspect, ninety percent by January of 2018, which for a lot of reasons is not a good decision on our end. So we have discussed and renegotiated that contract to make sure that the payout system worked for us.
Was that 13,000 paid, was that out of AIR money? Or was we, was the, I, I heard you say the 13,000 was to pay the teachers for their time in the professional development this summer. So that would come out of, no?
I, I'm thinking the 13,000 was part of the, the work. No, it has nothing to do with the AIR contract. It was the separate contract for the principal training and the training that we did from central office for hiring of administrators. Is that accurate? That's where my head goes for that amount.
I'd say approximately ten to fifteen staff members without the, the information in front of me that were compensated for their time in, for two days in July. And so that would have been a matter of maybe $4,000 or something around that, that range. I would have to do the math and look at that for, you know, I don't know their actual daily salary because it's calculated based on, on their salaries individually. But a relatively small amount of salary and the 13,000 was for the training done in, I believe it was March. We did that work with their, on the training for revising our hiring practices. We use that to completely revise our hiring for our, our leadership positions, including principal positions.
So that came out of last year's budget too?
Yes, that's my understanding.
Thanks, Sharon.
Do you have more on it? You're okay.
No, I'm fine.
Okay. So we have an emotion on the table to adopt the budget. Sandy?
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Sitnikow?
No.
Becker?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Sheldon?
Aye.
Carrie, five-one. Entertain the next motion.
I move that the resolution authorizing temporary borrowing in the amount not to exceed $6 million pursuant to section sixty-seven point twelve, print eight, print A, one, Wisconsin statutes be approved.
Second.
Did you want to say anything?
Oh, this is a line of credit, a yearly request from the business office for cash flow reasons in the month of November and particularly. In addition to that, in April, depending on when we get equalized aid payments, there's always a time period that we need to make sure that we have enough cash on hand until we receive these back.
Any questions?
But at any given time, a small amount or none of this would even be used and we're, we're not lump sum borrowing $6 million for a year to have it on standby.
Last year, we did not take a draw.
Okay.
And it's not my intention to take it any long, any day longer than, than we need it, if we need it. But I need it for coverage, just in case.
Chances are the, the state staggers payments and changes that, has changed that a bunch of times. So they stagger payments to districts and...
And they keep pushing it back, which puts more pressures on districts that are heavily aided like ours.
Okay.
Okay, Sandy?
McCoy?
Aye.
Sheldon?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Sitnikow?
No.
Lauren?
Aye. Carrie, five-one.
I move that the employment of staff as listed be approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
What's?
List, list of them.
Yeah, I know. I didn't, I see.
What? It's in, it's in Neptune.
Okay. Do you have it up? I didn't see that.
Do you have it? Christina, since you're right next door? If you go, there's two meetings listed on, oops, sorry, just went out of my... On Neptune, there's two meetings. So if you go into the special board meeting, that's where the employment stuff is.
Employment certified and non-certified.
And writers.
Okay.
So there's one teacher, grade five at MacArthur.
Okay, everybody, you go. Okay, Sandy?
Becker?
Aye.
Sitnikow?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Sheldon?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Carrie, six-zero. Set, I think that's it, right? Yeah. So I would entertain a motion?
Move to adjourn.
Adjournment, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed? We are adjourned.
That clock does not work.
You have been watching the Green Bay Area Public School District's Board of Education meeting. Please visit the school district's website, www.gbaps.org to view the program again. If you cannot fully access the information on this video, please let us know the accessibility issue you are having by calling 920-448-2025 or by email at communications@gbaps.org. We will try to provide the information to you in an alternative format and/or make the necessary improvements to make the information accessible.